All right, I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, not October 16th, November 6th at 6:32 PM. All selectmen are in attendance. I will ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to add item A C under new business, the appointment of a human services director to the ARPA commission. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us to approval of minutes. You should have two sets of minutes in your packets. A regular meeting of October 16th and the special meeting of October 20th.
We'll make a motion to approve the meeting of October 16th.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting since October 20th, 2023.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, brings us to present to speak. Anyone in the room or online? If you would state your name for the record and we ask you to limit your comments to two minutes. Yes, sir.
It's an 125 Mason Roar. I'm Aaron May. I had to be the chairman of the presidency services efficiency committee regarding item, whatever rule business is, eight or nine. This is a copy of the ordinance proposal from our committee. It was, it's been formatted by Chief Snyder so that you can see where the changes are easily discussed under new business, old business.
Old business, yes.
Any other comments for present to speak?
Hi, John Tean, 26 Elton's Road. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, Wellington Democrats are aware of social media discussions on social media concerning comments made by one of the Board of Education candidates on the Republican picket. The Democrats wish to be clear that we are committed to a fair and equitable government for all of Wellington's residents.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Seeing none in the room, no one else online, only one, going twice. We'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you so choose. All right, that brings us to correspondence. Do we have none for this meeting, Karen?
No.
All right. We don't know, I'll forget a ton of mail. And just for matter of record, this has always been male correspondence that has come in. And since COVID, that has seriously dwindled. All right, that brings you, brings us to my status report. Anything, no, nothing new on ARPA. We canceled the meeting we had planned for today. We just didn't have enough in project funds to close to allow us to take any new action. And we didn't have any new significant work to be done, so we canceled today's meeting. Anything new as we see to the action for this meeting?
The school building committee voted in the affirmative to send on the draft report, final report of the school building committee to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education and wait two weeks in case there's any response from either board indicating something significant is missing. At the end of the two weeks, unless we hear otherwise, we'll be issuing the report as the final. And as I was leaving the meeting, they were reviewing and I would assume we're approving the final financial report, which would be an appendix or an attachment to that report.
Okay, because it's still in draft form. You're just approving, moving a draft along.
Correct. And that draft will, after two weeks, that draft will become permanent unless someone says, wow, you missed something really important here.
Okay, so I anticipate getting a formal action after this meeting and then we'll forward that along for all of you to look at.
Right, that communication will come from me as board chair here tonight or tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
And how late this goes.
And how late they're still talking up there. All right, I will update you on staff. We do, we currently have two vacancies. The public works administrative assistant abruptly left us a couple of weeks ago, and so that closes on Thursday. It's 15 hour a week position and we had no internal candidates. And I am happy and a little sad for us to say that Karen has now been hired as our human services director. It was her first official start date. I really, I look forward to the work she's going to be doing there. She has been assisting my office since May, since that position became vacant to keep the office running. So I certainly have a good sense of what we have in store for us and I think it would be great for our residents. So I wish her the best of luck in that position. She has also agreed to assist in the selectmen's office until a replacement can be found. It is an unusual time with a new first selectman coming in. None of the three of us are seeking reelection, so there will be a whole new board in two weeks from tonight. And so Karen has agreed to stay on. And I'll be having a conversation with whomever my successor is after tomorrow's election about how we can smooth out that transition with this unusual situation. And the job has already been posted and it will close next Thursday, the 15th. I think they will move forward on that quickly and include both the old and the new board of selectmen. I will be asking to sit on a hiring committee. I think the the voice of both will be helpful and important.
Just a little bit of clarification. You said before that Karen had been assisting your office. I think you meant that she'd been assisting the
No, with no director, my office has taken over the work of the human services.
Oh, okay. She's been assisting in your office with running of human services. Now I understand.
Right, so sometimes being in that corner office means that you, you get all the fun. And so we wanted to make
It's the top of the heap.
Absolutely. And it's really important that no residents not have access to those services. So services continued. Not without its, you know, bumps in the road, but we have continued to serve in a capacity of ways and Karen has answered the call and threw up through her position here, so.
And then the other clarification question was, you said two weeks from tonight. Two weeks from tonight is actually our last meeting, right?
Oh, sorry, yes, two weeks from tomorrow.
So two weeks from tomorrow will be the new board.
Correct. We have one more meeting and then we are done. So yeah, one action. You're welcome. Thank you. Time change throws off data changes as well. So we'll keep you posted with those. And again, there'll be some communication again, probably not till Wednesday morning, once we know who the new board will be. Any other questions, comments?
No.
All right, that brings us to public works.
I did a, on such a report, I'm sorry. The, I have been approached by a couple of people in town with questions about the FOI stuff. There's been a lot of times about the FOI. Could you possibly, I know there's information that we would want to assure the taxpayers that we are responding to FOI correctly.
We absolutely are. And we've had multiple FOIs from different individuals. What you probably want to address is, is one by Mr. Tella. I fulfilled that request many months ago. And the items are always available for viewing. The request by Mr. Tella was that he receive them in an electronic form because of the amount of work done and comes with a cost, which he has not been willing to pay. He took us before the FOI commission and lost that hearing there. My understanding from our attorney is that he did not show up at the hearing. And so there's been no other movement through the FOI commission. We are still, as I see it in compliance, if he wanted to come in and view the documents, there would be no issue with that. But having, getting them is very different. There can be a cost we do charge and lack of willing to pay does not mean we have not fulfilled our end of the work. So it's one outstanding FOI request. We have had others in there. And I believe he, there's been others with other boards that do not affect the Board of Selectmen. There was an FOI request that was sent to the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen. I immediately responded. We had no responsive documents to that request. And so I believe he has something else before another entity that is not us. But we, we had a big request on behalf of several boards and commissions and that information was gathered because it would email information which the town had access to. So again, we are in compliance.
Okay, I just wanted to be, I believe that we were, I know there have been meetings about this before, some that I've been party to and I've participated in some of the gathering of the documents. I just wanted to make sure that we had addressed the taxpayers' concerns that we as a board or the selectmen's office was responding and following the FOIA yes, FOIA commissions guidance in those documents.
There has yet to be an FOIA request that has not been fulfilled.
Understood.
The expectation does not always match the work. And so there's a certain expectation.
Sure, I have, I have had the response to some FOI requests that we just didn't have what the person was looking for.
So.
So it didn't exist.
Right, it either doesn't exist or it does and you want it in a certain form. And again, that can come with a cost. But any other FOI request that did not come before the selectmen, I certainly will comment, I would turn them over to whatever board or commission they had. I'd be happy to answer those, well, you know, once I could seek out the information. But my understanding is he does have one before another entity in the same situation, a similar situation to ours.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, public works. Mr. Pazzano.
Okay, so a road inside Mullen is still going on around town. We've been doing a lot of patchwork, patching around town. We fixed some washouts that we had from the summer of the rain along the edges of the road. We fixed those. We've been pulling leaves around town. We fixed a few floor tiles here in the town office building. There was one, two in the kitchen, one in the main hallway and in the common room. We burnt the brush pile at the transfer station last week. We put out voting signs where they have coming election tomorrow. Cleaned up the shop. All the chip sealed roads have been swept. We backfilled at the fire department there where we did for the tree, well, for the roof leaders they added the fire department. Well, the town of Putnam actually came and tried jetting them out for us. We went down like 30 feet and that's about as far as we got. Their camera was too small. It was a orange plate. They didn't have their cameras a member, a larger plate. They couldn't unfortunately do it, but by the time Putnam was here, they jetted out a plate on Loshi Road. It's been clogged for quite some time. So it took 3,000 gallons of water to jet it out, but it's perfectly clean and spotless now. So hopefully we won't have a problem there for a while. And we set up the old town hall for the meeting and then we mowed down at the, the Kedward, is that where it's located? Property. There were some fields, so we took the skid steer with the bush hog and we mowed those just the fields, nothing in the fence, you know, just to keep the brushroom coming out. So.
I also, and I should have put in my update, we're having the front door replaced. And so that, we believe now it's going to happen on Friday the 17th of November. Troy just got information today that the door will be in, they'll be able to do that. So you didn't see much on that because it was an item that was under our spending limit. So came under the maintenance budget, but we had multiple problems with the front door. So be fixing some of the tile, probably the tile we just fixed, again, because they have to take up at least a row of tiles when they do that. So they're going to do it on a Friday, since the town hall's closed on Fridays. So for the least disruption. So thank you Troy for arranging that. And I want to thank the town of Putnam for coming in on the assist, both on Loshi Road with the fire department. When we had had our CIP meeting out there, there was a discussion of how they could get this done and what the cost of that would be. And they have been great partners to the town over the last few years. And so I reached out to Troy to see if it's something that they might be willing to or able to assist us with. So sometimes we, they need something from us and we need something from them and I appreciate their willingness to come in. So sorry that it didn't work, but happy that they were willing to try. Will public works comment their question? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to new business appointments. As you know, we've had openings for Board of Finance and a capital improvements plan committee recording secretary for some time. Out of nowhere, at the same time, we got not one, but more, a couple of responses. And I'm excited to say, I'll make the first motion on item A, which is Board of Finance Recording Secretary. This motion comes after way in from the Board of Finance Chair with certainly happy to stamp my approval on a motion. I will move to appoint Lisa Pakusi to the Board of Finance beginning October's, I'm sorry, November 16th, 2023 and expiring June 30, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, the first one I heard. And I will just say for the record, this expiration is on June 30, 2024, not because we don't have confidence, but because our process is annual appointments of recordings that are recording secretaries. And typically early in June, we will do reappointments so that it's a seamless transition if someone chooses to stay. With that, I'll open to discussion from either board member.
I have just heard kind of, you're in the grapevine. That's was a great candidate and considering we were happy just to have a living human being do the job, I think we've lucked out to also get a great candidate.
I think so too. So Lisa is in the room. I certainly would welcome Lisa to speak if she would like. She comes to us from talent where she has been in a similar position with the town council, Board of Education, Water Commission, Firehouse Subcommittee and substitutes for other entities since 2009. I read multiple sets of her minutes from various boards and commissions and I had no doubt that she could handle the minutes of our board and do as well. Stephanie Summers is on our Board of Finance Chair and also I certainly, it's important that those chairs weigh in on the appointment that we make. They come to us from there. So Steph, if you would like to share anything with us?
Well, we had a great interview and she has this humor, which is always important on the Board of Finance. And yeah, I was impressed with a couple of things. In particular, her work during the the school situation in Holland where her minutes were used as a, as a careful reference for investigators on that on that case. And I think that's sort of the pinnacle of what might happen to minutes. So I'm, I'm impressed with that and I think Lisa also tailors her minutes according to what the board's needs are and what the needs are for people who are on the board to refer to it. And I, I think that's, that's also a special insight. And she knows Al and Zoom and makes her own recordings on video. So pretty exciting stuff. So the other candidate was very strong too. So we were lucky in that.
Yeah, that we may have a, as a possibility. I will, you know, we certainly haven't taken a vote and no action, but I will first say, start by saying thank you Lisa and I'm sorry about budget. All right, seeing no other discussion and I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. It brings us to item B, Wellington Capital Improvement Plan Recording Secretary. I'll move to appoint Lisa Pakusi to the CIP Capital Improvement Plan Committee beginning, Recording Secretary beginning November 16th, 2023 and expiring June 30, 2024. Seconded by Jim. As far as discussion, again, same thing. Christina is, Milo's is the Chair of CIP. Again, candidate was vetted through her as well and she expressed the same approval of Stephanie in confidence in the work that she gave for CIP. So these are two really important committees that have, or boards that have a lot of information at a very critical time. So I want to thank Lisa for letting us assert. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Welcome.
Welcome Lisa. And I will say, we can't see their minds too. I will say you are welcome to join us for the rest of our meeting, but we will not be offended.
She's making notes.
She needed to think more policy and action.
A short, quiet meeting here. All right, and item C, I added ARPA Commission appointment. As you may be aware, the ARPA Commission by ordinance names the Human Services Director as a member. So we have had a vacancy on that board in this capacity since May. And now that Karen Cote has been named the Director, I would move to appoint Karen Cote, Human Services Director as a regular member of the Town of Wellington American Rescue Plan Act Commission effective immediately expiring once the charge of the committee has completed.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Discussion. This was an oversight on my part. Did not add to this agenda. And what I didn't want to see was another potential ARPA meeting before our next meeting in order to have that important voice on the commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I will note, we still have a vacancy for a member representing the public health community. That was in the past, both fire departments got together and recommended the name that individual resigned from the committee and it still is vacant. So hopefully that will be filled soon. All right. Moving on to approving vendor for the street sweeper CIP. So CIP had a project for a street sweeper and allocated $100,000 from the reserve fund for this project. And Public Works has been looking for a used sweeper as the cost of a new sweeper averages between $280,000, $310,000. And so we have planned to use all along. Up before you is a quote on a used sweeper that has become available from Chadwick Barrows for $80,000 and includes brooms and $1,000 trade-in on our current sweeper. And this would, if we were to take action on this, would represent $20,000 under budget. So I will make a motion to award the street sweeper purchase from CIP to Chadwick Barrows for $80,000. Discussion. So you have the quote in front of you? Or I can speak to, did you, Karen, did you pick up the copy in the time? Oh, it's at the bottom here. Okay.
So with, with
And I can share the process.
With something like this, how do we address things like bidding or state contractor?
Yes. So when we get into use like this, it gets a little challenging. So the policy speaks or the ordinance speaks to the Board of Selectmen determining the way by which we can make purchases and that bidding. We have, what's, we just recently purchased was it? There was another purchase we had recently where we followed the same process because it was used. It is not something we can get three equal quotes for. And there's no guarantee we would ever have three at the same time. It's a matter of when they become available. And so the, this is the discussion Donna and I've had on many times and now I apologize. Looking to Troy because I'm completely blanking on what we had just, we were looking at
Well, you talked about, it wasn't a vehicle, it was the sweeper.
Yeah, and we had a conversation with Donna about what, how do we, what handle this because we could potentially lose something with the length of the process. Because if we take action on approval, this is step one. The next step is that we would then send this item to the Board of Finance asking them to recommend the appropriation and the Board of Selectmen call a town meeting. Then the Board of Selectmen will call a town meeting and go back to town. So this is merely
This is one of Troy's favorite processes.
It is. And so because it is a lengthy process, Troy's had the conversation with multiple vendors before and we risked so maybe it was this when we started and we lost that.
All right, so let's not hold it off any longer.
Right, okay.
That answers my question.
But he spoke into the vendor about our process. And then it could take some time, you know, we need a month or two months.
And meeting, they're good, they understand.
And they were, I don't, you can let me finish. Then he spoke to them about the length of time it would take for a process and whether or not they would be able to hold this item for us. And the answer was yes. If we're looking at six, seven months, the answer would be very different. But in this case, no. We still have the possibility of purchasing this item. So any other discussion?
Yeah, why only a thousand dollars for
We're 28 years old and we paid $5,000 for it four years ago. So
And we were hoping it would make
$3,000 a year.
Exactly. So I really don't think you can get any more money for it. I mean, that's pretty much pushing nowhere. He was like, that's about it. He's like, I don't even really want it. I'm like, you didn't want it. And so he said, I'll give you a thousand dollars.
Perfect. And we no longer have to store it. That's a, that's a great question.
Like usually anything that runs.
We would think about giving them a thousand dollars.
Anything that runs, runs worth, is worth something.
At least five hundred dollars is the minimum ticket.
It costs some more to truck it out of here than what it's actually worth.
It's been good to us. Look, when we needed it, ours, there were no longer parts available for it until we had kept the one that had broken down so that we could cannibalize it for the, for this one that we had purchased. So there's really no life left in it whatsoever. So. All right, seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will note that this item will be one that will cross board. The next Board of Finance meeting is next week. And certainly this board could call a town meeting on the 20th. We would not be able to begin that town meeting. I've had lots of discussions on how that should be handled. And my thought is, would consult with the next Board of, next Board of Selectmen, explain to them the process if the board moves it forward through that process and that they take it, take the town meeting portion on, on their own. All right, go forth and tell them we've stepped on step one, Troy. The next item in your packet is tax refunds. It's a very light packet this month.
Yay.
Yay, I will move to refund Cheryl A. Trueheart refund in the amount of $29.58.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, what, you're just, you're rolling with it?
We voted.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you vote.
I did, I.
Okay, I didn't hear.
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear. All right, I will, motion carries. I will move to refund Carrie C. Cope in the amount of $215.38.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll move to refund Vault Trust in the amount of $118.06. Seconded by Jim. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And last, I move to refund Toyota Lease Trust $343.72.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, brings us to old business. All right, volunteer, I wish that it said sooner to our board. So I'm just gonna start with some of the changes there recommending the part that this abatement shall apply to current year tax liabilities. Only any past due liability would be the responsibility of the individual. If an individual has a past due tax liability, that will not disqualify that individual from this abatement. I know we had talked about this. I know we had talked about this. And the current ordinance, and I feel strongly should remain, that they be current in tax. Responsibilities and liabilities in order to receive the abatement. I think while this is used as a mechanism to recruit for the departments, this is certainly a responsibility of any taxpaying citizen, and then offering the abatements. But ignoring the tax liability, the owed tax liability is, I think it's a slippery slope. And I, I heard Mike last time, when you gave an example of what could be extreme. I did speak with our tax clerk about how often that had been an issue. And in her time, it happened twice.
Well, there's some variations in how this can be applied. And this is, the way this particular one is written is one of the variations that has been discussed. As I've made the point, my biggest concern was that what had happened to me was that one year, 11 months and three weeks previous, I had been one week late paying taxes. And what they were paid, and I paid my dollar or whatever interest. And so one year, 11 months, three weeks later, I was told I wasn't eligible for the abatement, even though I had committed the time to the community that the ordinance recognized, because those could be, basically two years ago, I had been one week late. And that to me is not, there's zero value in that scenario happening. And it's discouraging for someone who is volunteering for the community and goes against the purpose of this. I understand that there's more conversation where we're talking about if people are current on their taxes at the time of the abatement being awarded. I understand now that's a different scenario, but the idea that the thing looked back and said, if you were ever late in the last two years, too bad. That part I feel is just punitive, there's no value and it's potentially negative as a recruiting and retention tool. So that's the part I feel strong about. And I, I think I made comments previously that if you're current at the time that the abatement is given, I was good with that. Mainly for the example you cited.
And again, so, you know, the. It's in here somewhere. I don't know, I, 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 I still, I disagree with that section. We're not editing yet, so we'll just go on. It starts with change to fire EMS personnel. Our ordinance refers to volunteer fire ambulance personnel. I don't, I don't see why that language has to change.
Well, I mean EMS personnel is the overall group. Ambulance personnel, some people might, are specifically the people on ambulances.
But the, but the members of your department are members of a volunteer fire department. They fall into the volunteer fire. So I would say Wellington Hill, all of your members fall into the volunteer fire and as the, to those volunteers under Wellington One. So, I mean, it's a simple change, opposed to, I just don't. I'm curious as to why we would change it to EMS and not ambulance, but no one's here to answer, speak to that. I would certainly like, would have liked representation from both departments to weigh in on some of these changes. Item D, under eligibility requirement number two, is members of, with prior active service within the department for at least 15 years and continue to actively serve an administrative role, corporate officers or board of directors. They'd like to add, left to the discretion of the Board of Directors Executive Committee of each respective department. You know why, I mean, it, it doesn't.
I don't remember exactly what that wording changed. That is, that is similar to how it's applied right now, but it's not written exactly this way. I don't remember now why that was.
This is a whole new.
Version.
Category that says chief officer shall be exempt from the attendance and response requirements and will automatically be awarded the $2,000 abatement. On that. My edit includes retired volunteer firefighter, emergency medical technician who completed at least 25 years of service. That is from the new statute. That particular item, it is not in the recommendation from the Efficiency Committee, and that surprises me. And then personnel that are dual members of both fire departments are not eligible for a double benefit prior to the eligibility, let's be, establish the member must choose which department from which their eligibility shall be determined. That is removed from this version. Nope, I, I, I apologize, it is on the bottom of the page. So their version does not include the new category of retired personnel that I can think?
Yeah, and it was in the one we were talking about two weeks ago.
It is, it is in the version that we were moving forward. So I would say that should stay. That was one of the really big additions to.
Right.
To the current statute.
Would the Board be amenable to a motion to table this, since we don't have representatives here to ask?
Let's just go through it, so then, I mean, let's be honest, we haven't had time to digest there, so we'll go through that.
Just reading along.
Yeah, and then speak, I've seen it for the first time.
I don't think I have an opinion on it.
Right, I think it's a, a good time to remind Board and Commission Chairs, a report to the Selectmen should come in a more formal manner than a present to speak at our meetings, so that we can properly share the information, so. This adds the abatement schedule. If a member has completed two years of service since July 1st, they shall be entitled to $2,000. We, our current ordinance has a step up to the maximum, that you had to have certain number of years of service, so their version is if you're two years, you go right to $2,000, right to the maximum. And then it looks like you remove the five-year and the 10-year steps. And then goes to if a member of volunteer firefighters or EMS personnel who volunteered in each role for either departments for at least 25 years and who hold active status at the onset of the revision are eligible for $2,000 actual abatement of property taxes. This shall be awarded annually regardless of the member's status.
What, what line you want to run?
Be under a vacant schedule.
Yep. The vacant schedule being, yep.
I lost track of when.
Again, that version, you have the draft from me, says if a member has retired from voluntary service and completed 25 years of service, that came from the act, is entitled to $1,500 annual abatement, abatement of property taxes.
So the, just the way this is formatted, the stuff that has no highlighting on it, I presumed was from the current.
You would, you would think.
But that is not correct.
That is not correct.
Okay. On more reason, with clarity.
If a member has completed five years preceding the date, they are entitled $750. So this is a little bit out of order from what we have, but there are those steps. So, here in my, my issue, you're, they're saying if you completed two years, you get $2,000. If you completed five years, you get $750. Doesn't, doesn't seem.
Um, because it's a different type, it looks like it's a different type, and I can't.
So I don't know if they say, maybe they're suggesting removing those. I don't know.
Yeah.
They're just highlighted with no notes. Change to see five years and add $1,500. And, and you can see again, my version did a step up. It was 500, 750, and 1,000, and I moved those to 1,500 and $2,000. This is if a member's completed 15 years. The member shall be entitled $750, five years, no change to five years and $1,500. So there's some clarification that needs to happen. And then added the benefits here and applied to members who are in good standing and hold active status beginning of the adoption, not before. All years of active service accumulated by active membership prior to the revision will be counted toward the abatement.
If I remember correctly, what that was supposed to do was, it, to clarify, it applies retroactively only on your years of service if you're current. It doesn't look back to people who have already sunsetted from this program to, it'll look back to bring them up like a retro. Think that's what I was supposed to clarify, but again, we need clarification.
Right, and ours has language in here that talks, you know, item three under eligibility, it certainly didn't address the effectiveness. I've addressed the effectiveness. Can't have it effective on July 2015 and then say it doesn't go back before this took action. So there's some conflict here. So I will reach out to the committee and see if we can get some clarification to add to our discussion while you all mull this over. And share, I'll share anything we get.
Should I make the motion to table, or do we just keep carrying it as a little business?
Carrying it as a little business.
Very good.
Can we say that with Coach Snyder?
He said that Coach Snyder had done the formatting.
Okay.
But I certainly would like input from both departments, and I think it's necessary. Both departments participated in the draft of the initial ordinance, and that would be the key here as well.
Right, and both departments participated in the Efficiency Committee meeting. But again, even though I was in attendance in that meeting, I can't quite align that meeting with this format. So I think, even though I was there, I'd love to be able to speak to the guests, but I'm not there.
And, and again, why it would be really important to share a communication. Certainly Mr. Tanaka is the chair, should have sent a communication that outlined the, the meeting and their changes and some discussion, or then before. Alright, so moving forward, that's the rest of our regular business. Unless either of you see something else. Okay. And that brings us to present to speak. We have more folks online, it's still some in the room. Again, if you would like to speak, ask you to name, state your name for the record and limit your comments to two minutes. Anyone in the room has to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, John Tehan, 26 Elders Mills Road. Two things, I heard you discussing earlier the Freedom of Information Act. I did do some looking at the Freedom of Information Act in Connecticut and how it works. Many towns have a Freedom of Information Act policy. I couldn't find one for Wellington, and I wonder if we ought to be looking at establishing such a policy. Other towns have clear rules by which someone can be adjudged indigent and unable to pay. Whereas I don't really see that here in Wellington, and I thought that it might be a good idea for the board to consider something along those lines. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, I'm perturbed to hear that we're blowing out storm drains. I've got one at the foot of my driveway. It's been full of water for three years, and I wonder if we could get that one done.
If you have something to leave before the meeting's over, follow one.
Suppose we can get that information to our Public Works. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room, present to speak? No, online, Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, everybody. James Marshall, 46 Fisher Hill Road. I just wanted to make two brief statements. One, I wanted to welcome Lisa as the recording secretary on both the Board of Finance and CIP Committee. So welcome Lisa, it's a valuable position and it's good to have you on board. And the other just brief comment is regarding the town meeting we had earlier in the week. I'm sorry, last, last week now, time flies. I just wanted to say, I'm excited about the kind of unanimous support related to the funding of various building improvements at the schools and that I hope that that, you know, that level of motivation and town support and commitment extends beyond whatever happens on Election Day tomorrow. And that we really continue to try to work hard to address the needs of both the schools, of fire departments, and other town buildings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak?
Yes, Miss Summers.
Steph Summers for Wyne Road. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the tax abatement for the volunteer firefighters and emergency workers. I think that I, the little bit I understand about it, there's a sort of intricate stair stepping of years of service and edging up to what I think is now the 2,000 maximum that, that a tax abatement could, could yield for these volunteers in town. And I would just urge the board to look at having that be more front-loaded than back-loaded, because it's $2,000 is, while it's double what it has been, it's a, it's a pretty modest sum. It seems like it would be a shame if we're using it as an incentive for volunteerism and as a reward for those who have gone on these calls, you know, in the middle of the night for us over the years, to, to not really be in effect at its maximum yield until a half hour before they're retiring from their day jobs and, and unable maybe to do some of the services that an able-bodied has afforded them forever. So, before then, so I'm just urging you to look at that, how gradual that amping up is, and whether it could be maybe accelerated a little bit to reward them while they're in the years that they may need it more, so.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Going once, going twice? Alright, I'm gonna move on. You will have one more time to share your thoughts with this board, two weeks from tonight. Alright, Good and Welfare. Mobile Food Share, which is here every other Wednesday, will be here this Wednesday from 11:00 to 11:30. And then two weeks from that is the day before Thanksgiving, November 22nd. It will be at 9:00 AM. And so we've been doing advertisement of that, but due to the Thanksgiving holiday, Food Share has changed their schedule, so the truck will be here at 9:00 AM. Anyone who's come through Food Share has gotten an updated note from, from us to know that. So please note that, I apologize in my shuffling of papers here. The rest of my items, tomorrow is Election Day. I would be remiss if I did not thank our Elections Department for the tremendous amount of work they do to make our elections happen and that they be safe and fair. I don't suppose either of our registered voters will get much sleep tonight. And we will see them right early. It is eight, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM upstairs here in the Town Office Building tomorrow, and I may never find.
I'll steal something in thunder, remind people about Veterans Day coming up and the importance of that day. I'm sure you were gonna say that.
Yeah, I have my State Police update, so that's what I'm looking for, go ahead.
So that was just reminding people, well, Veterans Day.
So Veterans Day is Saturday, November 11th. It is observed in the town on Friday the 10th, so all town offices will be closed. There will be a Veterans Day ceremony at 11:15 at the Veterans Memorial in front of the Senior Center. Here we go, in front of the Senior Center. So all are welcome to attend that, where we'll be honoring some World War II veterans from three different towns, one from Wellington, one from Ashford, and one from Mansfield. So the mayor from Mansfield and the first selectman from Ashford will be joining myself and our veterans at this ceremony, so. 11:15 AM.
And did you say that's on Friday or Saturday?
It is on Saturday, that will be on Veterans Day, because we observe. And for anyone who will read our minutes, I know you all love to read them, the transfer station will be open on Veterans Day. The holiday, people will ask, and now you know. The Wellington Access Agency has a mobile food pantry, and that will be the first Thursday of the month, and the next one will be on December 7th from 12:00 to 1:00 PM at the Senior Center. As always, please continue to support our local businesses and restaurants if you can. If you're looking for a place to make your charitable donations, the Wellington Fuel Bank is in need. Our food pantry could also use donations. Our biggest food drive is scouting for food. Unfortunately, our Boy Scouts are not going to be hosting that event this year, it saddens me. They are a small group because they have not had new scouts, as we don't have a Cub Scout pack. So our new Human Services Director is working on how we can address the need for food prior to the holidays. Is working on how we can address the, the need for food prior to the holidays, so look for information on that coming soon. And I'm happy to say that Cub Scout Pack eighty two is coming back to Wellington, the parents have stepped up. It takes a tremendous amount of parent volunteers to make that happen and they have an informational meeting on November seventeenth at six thirty at the public library. So if anyone knows of some young boys or girls interested in joining Cub Scout Pack eighty two, you can attend that event. Election Day, and yes, our October. Update from Troop C, there were two hundred and seventy six calls for service, this included fourteen accidents, fifteen criminal investigations. Zero burglaries, two larcenies, one hundred and seventy nonportable matters and one arrest. Motor vehicle enforcement included sixty four total traffic stops, zero DUIs, arrests or misdemeanor summons. Nineteen infractions, nineteen written warnings and twenty five verbal warnings. Anything else? I hope tomorrow's election day is uneventful. I encourage everybody who is eligible to vote to come out and vote and certainly be respectful of those. Who are, who have expressed their willingness to serve in these multiple capacities and. Stop by the PTA bake sale out front to support the Wellington Scholarship Foundation. Seeing no other business before us, I will move to adjourn at seven twenty four.
Seven.
Second by Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, have a good night.